We end the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is in its name. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Notice that this public hearing and the meeting following thereafter is being electronically recorded. First, we will have the public hearing on the proposed 2017 budget request to the mayor. The proposed budget out tonight is a level service budget in the amount of seventy-three million, five hundred dollars, six hundred and, oops, five hundred thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-nine cents. I'll repeat it clearly just so there's no confusion. Seventy-three million, five hundred thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-nine cents. At this point, I will open the public forum. Is there anybody who would like to address the school committee tonight on the budget? We're just going to leave it open for about five minutes in case anyone comes, and then
That's the screening of the movie.
Yeah. I'm surprised no one's pointed that out to them.
All right, it being six-twenty, there being nobody to address the school committee on the budget, I will close the public hearing, and we'll take a brief three-minute recess and then start our regularly-scheduled general business meeting. We'll start with the first item on our agenda, which is an approval of the minutes from our April eleventh, 2016 meeting. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved with a few minor changes that we'll make.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Moving on to our consent agenda, a motion to accept a donation of 2.5 cases of paper from an anonymous donor to Hyman Fine. So moved! All those in favor? Aye. Motion to accept a donation in the amount of one thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars from Commemorative Brands, Inc. to the class of 2018.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion to accept a donation in the amount of seventy dollars from Gerald Brady to the Adderall High School Musical Revolving Account.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion to accept a donation in the amount of thirty-nine hundred dollars from an anonymous donor to be deposited into the general fund at Adderall High School.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion to approve a field trip proposal for twenty-four grades five through eight Wamsetta students to attend a band competition in Bristol, Connecticut on May twenty-ninth, 2016.
Twenty-seventh.
May twenty-seventh, 2016.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. That concludes the consent agenda. First item on our business agenda, administrative vacancies update. Anything for tonight, Mr. Sawyer?
We have multiple processes in motion right now, but as of this evening, no details to report.
Next on our agenda, we have a presentation regarding the Hyman Fine playground. I understand Principal Martin and Nicole Vassar are here.
Yes, we are.
Please come up and join us. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you so much. We're very excited to be here. This is our second time in front of the committee. We had come earlier to let you know that we were in the process of raising funds for a playground expansion. Nicole Vassar is one of the parents at Hyman Fine. She came to me a little over a year ago and said she had a plan. I know it was March second because she was dressed as a cat in a hat on the day she had come in to read to her daughter's kindergarten class. She not only had a plan, but she had a good plan, and she has implemented the work that she had set forth to do in order to be able to expand on the playground that's at Hyman Fine. Her aunt was part of the process in the raising of the funds and the putting together of the playground that currently stands there, and what we would like to do at this time is to be able to move forward, to spend the funds that have been raised through her efforts and the efforts of the Hyman Fine PTO and the families at Hyman Fine and the community at large, as we have been able to reach out in many different ways for fundraising efforts. And we would like to be able to put in a structure, that's a climbing structure. I believe that you had received a packet, extensive, I'm not quite sure how much information you got, but we're excited about the climbing structure, and we're also excited to be able to put in some swing sets for the children. When the old, old playground was torn down a few years ago, it was a wooden structure that had fallen into disrepair. When that came down, I had asked students to write me letters and to tell me what they had wanted as far as what should go in that area. Swing sets was very high on the list, as well as spas and other things that were completely unattainable. But that's great in the imaginations of children. We also had reached out to the community and asked them what sorts of things they wanted to put into the Hyman Fine community, what they wanted to put into the space, and these are the pieces of equipment that we came up with that fit into the budget and the plan for being able to raise the funds in the amount of time that Mrs. Vassar had chosen to do the work.
What's the timeline for the work that you're hoping to do?
At this point, we're waiting for approval from the committee. Once that happens, we need to contact the company, and once that happens, they, it's a, how many weeks?
It's about five weeks for delivery from the time you place the order, and then the actual installation time is about two to three days.
I understand you have to do some alterations to the land first to get it ready for...
There's just some brush that has overgrown over the years. You can actually see the, there's a kind of a border around the tree line, and the brush has kind of grown over into the grass area. So just be clipping that back a little bit.
We have a landscaping and cleanup day that's scheduled for this coming Saturday, and if the parents don't bring the correct equipment to get rid of that brush, I certainly have it in my garage, so we will be clearing, and it's not a massive effort either. I was actually out there this morning taking another look just to make sure that I was clear on what I was conveying to you this evening, and there's some trees and it's brush, it just needs to be cut back. And other than that, all of the equipment and the work that needs to be done will be delivered to us and installed by the company as part of the price that you saw on the information that we forwarded to you.
Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Quinn?
Just a comment, so this is a spider web that Hexamid is, so it's kind of bringing me back to my childhood in Pawtucket when they put up their first spider web.
Slater Park.
Slater Park.
Yes.
Made me a playground in Pawtucket, and it was a cool experience when I was a kid, and I'm glad that the students of Attleboro and those students who just, you know, live in the city would have access to it. One thing I did want to just check is, I think it's on page eighteen of the proposal, it says that "weekly check of the net is recommended to ensure that no acts of vandalism have damaged the rope. Periodic checks on tension will assist in the durability of the project." Is Sedexo on board to, you know, make sure that this...
I think it's more just making sure that they haven't actually frayed or things like that.
My custodian does a daily check. Obviously, if it's inclement weather, he's not out there, but he checks the grounds, he makes sure that there's no litter that's been strewn about during the evening hours, and that's part of his daily rounds, so we can expect him to be out there taking care of the visual checks.
Excellent. I'm glad it's going to be heading out of there.
Yes, we're very excited, and it becomes part of our community, it's a community resource. It's not just Hyman Fine students that we're hoping will use it, we're hoping that others from the community will be able to come in and use it as well.
Mr. Storrs?
I just wanted to comment, twenty-eight thousand dollars. So I think it's important to put that out there. So, you know, great job to the PTO and the administration for embracing this. Just wanted to check on the installation, it looked like fifty-five hundred dollars was allocated, does that mean that somebody from that organization is going to come out for the install?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes. And I have a question about the install for you. When this equipment is ordered, it will arrive, and they will arrive according to the timeline that they set. I personally don't have a problem having it installed as soon as possible, and that may involve time during the school day. We would make sure that the area was cordoned off, and I think that it might be a wonderful experience for children to actually watch it being installed, so I'm hoping that that would be approved as well. If that is something that you're concerned about, I'm more than happy to discuss, but I'm not sure if there are any rules or regulations regarding if we can have that happen during a school day.
Does the administration have anything on that?
I think going along with our envision 2020, it might be the first field trip taking place outside of their own grounds and watch construction take place with the parents and the faculty donating that amount of money and going to a great cause, and it just doesn't happen overnight, so, you know, there's no problem with that.
Great, great. Thank you for your notice.
Any other questions? So, we need a motion to approve the proposed alteration to the land and approval of the plans as presented.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, congratulations, and thank you very much. We look forward to seeing the finished project.
Thank you very, very much.
Next, we have information on the CTE program in Tri-County. If Principal Rooney could join us as well. As Principal Rooney's getting settled, we've all received a lot of information on this over the past several weeks and before that as well. Principal Rooney's been engaged in talks with Tri-County as well as Superintendent Sheehan to try and find a compromise. We did receive a letter, or excuse me, an email from Desi indicating that we could use Chapter Seventy-Six, Section Twelve, in order to reach an agreement with Tri-County by which we would, you know, we would reach an agreement as to tuition and payment to send students to that school, similar to how we could reach an agreement with any district for any purpose. So that's kind of where we stand right now. We want the administration and Principal Rooney to give us an update on those discussions.
Well, first thing, as you recall from the last meeting, that we're going to look for providing, for this administration to provide the school committee with some additional information on the option, which was that the students would in fact start at Tri-County the second semester of their freshman year. If you recall, there were basically four parts of that inquiry that we're going to provide for you. One was DESE regulations, the other one was the communication with Tri-County, another one was the exploratory program matchup from our school to their school, and the last one was about the academic concerns that we may have had. So, in the last couple of weeks or since that time, Mr. Rooney, myself, Mrs. Edmonds as the CTE director, Julie Little as our guidance director, and Ian Montagno, who's going to be the new CTE director, met and we started the work from that particular point with regard to those four areas. So, do you want to give an update on what that looks like?
Sure. Thank you for having me tonight. This is obviously something that, you know, we realize is an important endeavor for the school committee, but also for these families that are potentially involved, and so Mrs. Montagno and I had a conference call with Mr. Procosini, who is the principal at Tri-County. He reminded us that May first is kind of their milestone date in terms of their application and acceptance process, and so, you know, there are some things that we can't really put into place officially until after May first, when he has some internal decisions that have been made. But, you know, obviously, one of the decisions, or one of the implications of a student leaving us after the ninetieth day of school, which is what semesters are based on, is that we are obviously on a trimester schedule. And I was relieved to hear that in conversations with Tri-County that, given the fact that they have a week of academics and then a week of exploratory, followed by a week of academics and then a week of exploratory, that any students who started as freshmen at Attleboro High School and then were eligible to transfer after the ninetieth day would not be at a disadvantage in terms of their algebra class, or their English class, or their social studies class. Actually, given the fact that some of our classes are only two trimesters in duration, they may actually be a little bit ahead of the game from that standpoint. So, obviously, you know, we want to make sure that those students would not be at a disadvantage if this option were to come to fruition. The other aspect of it is that, obviously, these students have an interest in Tri-County because they have aspects of their exploratory that Attleboro High School does not offer. So things such as cosmetology, dental assisting, auto collision, we have legal and protective services, but it's not Chapter Seventy-Four approved as of yet. And so, in our conversations with Mr. Procosini, we were both confident that we could put a plan in place that would enable those students who had an interest in going to Tri-County after the first semester, you know, would not be at a significant disadvantage upon transfer as far as their exposure to exploratory programs. So, again, I, you know, I'll have more information, we have another conference call scheduled, but, you know, out of respect for the fact that they need to get to May first, they need to kind of get some things in order as far as, you know, what their enrollment looks like for September of 2016, we have to have another conversation to be able to finalize some things.
Is that conference call scheduled?
We've reached out to them, I have not been able to solidify it as of yet. Mr. Procosini was on vacation last week, so, and today was quite a full day, so getting back into the rhythm.
And I've had two additional conversations with Superintendent Dockery since we've last met, and pending on what the school committee decision or the direction that I'd like to go in, he's expecting a conference with me sometime this week with regard to what decision we're looking to make.
Well, I appreciate the administration's work on this. I mean, this has definitely been an issue, that's involved a lot of legwork on your part, and it's an important issue, so it's worthwhile certainly, and we appreciate all the work that you guys have done and continue to do. With regard to the other potential option, which is Chapter Seventy-Six, that would require, you know, if the school committee was inclined to go that route, it would require reaching an agreement with Tri-County School Committee as to the specific logistics of it, including the tuition, how much it was going to cost, et cetera, for each student. It's not set by the state, similar to this Chapter Seventy-Four program. And I think, you know, that there are, as we consider that, there are some legitimate concerns with utilizing Chapter Seventy-Six, given, you know, possible precedent setting and sending kids to other districts, given that Chapter Seventy-Six is something that can be used between any district for any purpose. So, you know, as we explore it, I think, you know, it is important to know that Chapter Seventy-Six isn't just an option we can just utilize of our own accord or one way Chapter 76 isn't just an option we can just utilize of our own accord or one without potential drawback. Anyone have any, any comments? Yeah, Mr. Storrs?
One question. You mentioned the May 1st deadline for Tri County. So, I just wanted to check, was there any indication of whether or not those students, those handful of students, if we didn't act in time, would they lose their spot?
My, my conversation with Superintendent was in fact, after that particular time, that they would be filling the slots if we didn't act upon them because they're looking to fill seats.
The, the only reason I ask that is because it is a week, you know, effectively a week away. So, I would hate to see if the committee was going to act for that to happen.
The conversation that I had with the principal, again, I, the superintendent wasn't involved in the conversation, in the conference call that we had. The impression that I was under was that there would be, there would be some slots available. He would not, he would not quantify because he had not finished the acceptance process for, for any of their indist, their in-district students at that point. So, again, you know, without, you know, without anything in writing or anything like that, obviously, I can't say unequivocally, but I did, I did not, given the fact that we agreed to revisit this after May the 1st, I, I think, I don't think he was leading us on from that standpoint. I mean, if it pleases the committee, I can, at the first meeting after May the 1st, I'd be more than happy to, if you have room on the agenda, I'd be more than happy to come back and present you with a more formalized update for what we put in place.
Yeah, I think we'll certainly need, need that.
Okay.
You know, and also for, you know, for the committee and community's benefit, you know, after hearing from DESI in anticipation of this discussion, you know, I did initiate reaching out to Tri County School Committee. I have not heard anything back. You know, again, that would take some, we'd take an agreement with them even if we were to go down that road, but I have initiated trying to contact them, and will continue to do so. Mr. Quinn?
Two kind of clarifying questions. You mentioned that one of our programs were not Chapter 74 approved, correct?
That's because it just got off the ground. Legal and protected.
So, first question is, when we have a Chapter 74 approved program, the past practice and policy, is that for that program, Attleboro students stay in the district? Is that correct?
Yep.
And is our exploratory a Chapter 74 approved program? Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Sir Tyler?
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Just a quick question. I mean, this, this whole thing, the timeline of the whole thing is just terrible from the Department of Education, the whole regulation. I mean, and there's, there's so many moving pieces to this, and I appreciate what the administration and Principal Rooney have, you know, have done, and especially in the last couple of weeks of reaching out, but is it, is it like we need more time, though, to make sure that we're not missing something? Where we're not, with 10 students from Attleboro, we're not gonna be missing something big here, and we need more time before we can actually implement this new regular, regulation? I mean, it's just, and I know we're not rushing things. We're trying to do everything we can right, but it still seems such a short timeframe that we're trying to do it, and, and not our fault. I don't believe it's our fault. I'm just wondering if it's, it's something that we, you know, shouldn't push off and making sure we have all our ducks in line, and then, you know, parents from, from this day forward know that, you know, do not be applying to Tri County. We're so late into the process. That's, that's kind of what bothers me about it. I mean, so, I mean, I need some type of reassurance that, you know, everything is possibly being done, but student is gonna be least affected. I shouldn't say unaffected, because that's not a proper word to use.
I, I think if you saw the last communication from the Deputy Commissioner, Jeff Wolfson, that they're in the, the same boat that you are, Mr. Tyler, and that they didn't expect a lot of these particular things either. I don't believe that this was well-vetted as a regulation, quite honestly. And the second piece is that even to the point where them sending, Jeff Wolfson sending me the email with regard to involving Chapter 76, Section 12, and putting it back on the school committee and contacting the other school committee, I mean, it's almost as if then that regulation didn't exist. We're sitting here, and we only got this back last Thursday or Friday that I received this, and so, and I immediately sent it to the chairman. The reality is that we're sitting here as a body saying we've got basically 10 kids involved, according to the superintendent of schools in Tri County, and whether we're trying to find a way to make it work for the second semester, or in fact, is the school committee invoke their statutory rights of saying that the kids start their freshman year in September there? You know, I don't believe that DESE anticipated any of this. And quite honestly, to come up with a, a regulation that almost is, supersedes or, or makes it null and void the other 603 regulation is, is ludicrous, because it puts all of the pressure and timelines and so forth on the school committee, the school department, but it leaves the parents and the children up in the air until those decisions are made. And we've got a group of kids sitting back there who are saying, where am I going to school? Am I starting at, at Attleboro High School? Am I starting at Tri County? And, you know, the kids didn't do anything wrong, but, but they're left in limbo a little bit.
Yeah. Mr. Rooney?
And this goes back a little bit to Mr. Storrs' question as well. I, I can tell you that a couple of the different options that we talked about during the conference call, if, if, if they're accepted and if they're implemented, that, you know, a year from now, there would still be a reason for Attleboro families who had an interest in Tri County to, you know, to go through some sort of application process to be able to at least qualify for a semester transfer. So, you know, I, without, you know, having something in writing, without, you know, speaking for them, I do have a, a high level of confidence that they have every desire to want to make this work for Attleboro families as well.
And I think, you know, there, there are three options here. The first option, which I, which I believe is the least palpable to everyone, is to say under Chapter 74, they have to attend Attleboro, and so that's, that's what we're going to do. The second option is the compromise option that we've talked about, that Principal Rooney and Principal Sheehan have been, Superintendent Sheehan, excuse me, have been working towards, which is the, the mid-year solution. And then the third is to attempt to contact Tri County and work out a deal with them under Chapter 76, something that I don't, I don't believe Attleboro's used before, certainly not recently. But the only way that we can take the kids out of limbo is to say, we're not gonna let them go in at all next year, which is not something that we want to do. I mean, the, the two outcomes, the two outcomes that have possible beneficial outcomes to varying degrees of the children require more work. I mean, there, there's just no way to say today, you know, we're gonna go forward with either of those solutions because we don't know if we can. So I think at this point, we need to continue working down both tracks with the, with the understanding that it's not a guarantee that Chapter 76 will be utilized, but we will continue to pursue it. Mr. Quinn?
I think I was just gonna piggyback off of Mr. Storrs' question. Do we know the day in which a student has to either confirm or release a seat if they're offered one?
I was given the date of May 1st.
But that's when they're notified. So obviously, there's a leeway, like you're accepted to college, and then there's a...
Well, and, and that, because of our conversation tonight, that's when my, that's when my conversation's going to be with Superintendent Dockery at a number of levels, those specific dates, the timelines, the notification pieces, so forth, and get a feel from his school committee, whether in fact, if that was presented by the Attleboro School Committee, and I'd be talking to Chairman Withers even more so about this, but approaching him, how does he feel, and, and polling potentially the Tri County School Committee as to adhering to Chapter 76, Section 12, and a mutual agreement. I think the tuition, quite honestly, has been already based, it's already there. I think it'll be the same amount that it has been for the other children who are currently sophomores and juniors there.
Mrs. Storrs?
Yeah, I think I want to start off by saying, it's a shame that DESI didn't, likely didn't vet this appropriately, because the wording they used is what's put us in this position, you know? The moment for legal, you start using the term "shall," it causes these kinds of problems. And for them to try to use the, the solution that they did, I, I think that's too bad as well, that they should have really not allowed this to get to this point. But at the same time, they, we, we do have something from them that I, I believe we should look into further, saying that we can allow this to happen, allow these students to go to Tri County, which I believe the majority of us feel would be in the best interest of those students who know that they want to do something that we don't yet offer. And I know we want to expand exploratory, and we want to be able to offer more opportunities for our students. But for these students, it just seems to me that it's, it's in their best interest to be able to attend Tri County from September. That's, that's just my personal opinion. I, I know that more legwork has to happen, but I think that's where I'm leaning right now. I'd rather see the students in the best interest attend school from day one.
Mr. Gaddy?
Just, just as a clarification point, Mr. Storrs, you're saying only in programs that we do not offer, or all Tri County's interested students in general?
No, my understanding is in...
They automatically have to go to our program that we offer that's been approved and certified. They have to go to us. There's no choice.
If they are not doing a program that, that we, you know, that we don't offer, they are not allowed to go to Tri County, period.
Okay.
So, yeah, absolutely. I'm, I'm not trying to change anything from the past.
Okay.
Historically, it's always been only the programs that we do not offer, they are allowed to go, go outside.
Mr. Quinn?
Yeah, I think I really appreciate the amount of effort that's gone into the administration trying to work out a compromise, because frankly, a sophomore year admittance or, or application process is just completely untenable. And for whatever cause of the breakdown where we didn't know, didn't know the law was in place, you know, that has put the district and the committee in a bind, and to earlier points, I feel like to a large extent, it's almost like a hit and run in baseball, where we ran, we did what we were supposed to do, but the state hasn't provided any sort of structure or guidance on how this would be executed. But I, I also think about, you know, our policy's been clear in terms of when we have an, an approved Chapter 74 program, that's where students go. So regardless of whether or not, you know, the electrical program offers the same amount of hours in, in Attleboro versus Tri County, that's our policy, because, you know, we don't want to be providing the same services twice. So, I guess what I'm wrestling here with a little bit is, are we providing an undue benefit based on our policies? When, when we have the approved Chapter 74 programs, that's where the students go. When the exploratory is approved, Chapter 74, that's where we go. We've worked out a compromise to ensure that those students who want to advance into a specific program that we don't yet have can go into Tri County. And without that, I don't think that, I don't think we can keep them there and totally refuse that option. And I think that's why the compromise is, is so important, and I appreciate the work that's gone into it.
So can I just be very clear on something? That only the students who have applied and have been accepted to a program at Tri County that we do not offer, those are the students that we're talking about, and only those students. Any students that in electrical, or whatever the case may be, in programs that we have, culinary arts, et cetera, they have to go to our approved programs.
Right. So the policy's been, whenever we have an approved program, we keep the student in control.
Absolutely.
All right. So, so the, the exploratory is also an approved program, correct?
That's correct.
It is, but...
Okay.
Our, our exploratory program is approved by the state.
Yes.
However, it does not include some of the things that are offered at Tri County. So therefore, there's no exposure to dental assisting at Attleboro High School in exploratory. There's no exposure to...
HVAC.
HVAC.
Okay. But to clarify, so I, the exploratory, as I understand it, at Tri County is nine one-week exploratory programs.
Correct.
There are a total of five programs at Tri County that we do not offer, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So there are four programs that would be a duplicate anyway, even if you did all five of those exploratories that we don't offer, because you gotta go through the nine. My question is, is when a student applies to Tri County, do they apply with a specific program in mind?
Yes.
All right. So then, so then the exploratory, to a certain extent, is moot because they're only gonna go into one of five anyway, and they've already identified what shop they want to go into. So the exploratory is more for students who kind of maybe go in undecided, and it's not like they could, they could go in and say, I want to do dental, and then all of a sudden, automotive really rocks my world, and, and now I want to transfer into that.
But they also, they also have to make a certain grade in exploratory and be recommended. So they could say, I want to go to Tri County for cosmetology. When their week of cosmetology rolls around, if it's either not floating their boat the way they thought it was going to, or if they're, if they're not displaying the, the aptitude or the, you know, the proficiency to be able to achieve the score that they expect them to achieve, then they're, then they're gonna counsel them into either another program that may have floated their boat a little more, or maybe they showed a little bit more aptitude in, or maybe they just have a couple of extra spots in, or they may counsel them to consider coming back to their home school.
Okay. And is it possible for part of these negotiations to feature a week of whatever their exploratory is? The, like, so, you know, for days 85 through 90, they could go to cosmetology or whatever the case may be?
Anything's possible.
All right.
Mr. Larson, then Mr. Tyler?
Yeah, I keep coming back to the fact that the state handed us this problem and then told us that, you know, if we really want to, we can use a different law to ignore it. Really wrestling with that one. I think the best-case scenario of the three is for the 10 students to, to be here for the 90 days, for us to have an arrangement with Tri County, knowing that they're coming, fulfilling our part of the law, and then doing the best that we can for the kids. I'm happy to hear, based on your conference call, because one of my biggest concerns was the rest of their academic courses and where they'd be doing a mid-year transfer, because that's not a great solution either. But based on the conversations that you've had with them, I feel better about that aspect of it. I think it's safe to say, no matter what we do, there's gonna be a fair amount of people that don't like it, but in the same vein, I think the state's handed us this situation that we have to deal with, that, you know, they're handling it so poorly at this point that, very frustrating, so.
Mr. Tyler?
Thank you, Mr. Kim. I mean, it's very clear that the regulation is just missing one more thing. It should say agricultural, natural resources, or a program not authored by Chapter 74 home school exploratory program. I mean, that, that's the line it's missing. And, you know, we've always had a good relationship with Tri County here, and the kids have always wanted to. It's like we're being penalized because of underperforming, underperforming schools up in the Boston area that didn't want to go to the vocational schools in their home district, they went to other ones, so that's why this regulation was, was implemented. So, you know, I have to agree with Mr. Larson, I'm the majority. I'm, I'm just worried about, you know, when you stop something new, this is where the problems come in. I want to make sure that all the, you know, the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed on this. It's, it's very important, because they are two different type of programs. They're, they're two, way different, you know what I mean? You're spending the whole week in, in basically in that major of choice, if you will, and then a week of academics. So we can't offer anything like that, not with the scheduling that we have. Matter of fact, the scheduling that we currently have in high school really doesn't even benefit our own CTE students to the extent we'd like it to. So again, I mean, I, I mean, I agree with your bill. It's a hard thing. It's dropped on our lap. We have to do something. I agree with Mr. Quinn that we don't, as a school committee, we don't want to be breaking regulations and policies or whatever, but, you know, the students do have to come first. That's what we're here for. And again, it's, it's not, I don't think it's anything in the administration's fault. It, it's not ours. It's whoever wrote this ridiculous regulation on something that never had a problem before. We've never had a problem with this. And, and when people try to boil it down to money, and it's, it's only 15,000 per student, and I don't want to say only, it's not a thing, but that's, that's not about money. We're spending that on our students. So it's not, you know, you're stealing from Peter to pay Paul in that incident. It's not a loss or gain or whatever, you know? The only loss or gain is in the student, you know? So I just, again, I just want to make sure that we're looking at this at every possible avenue, and we have the answers. The timeline is just way too close. That's my whole concern about it. You know, if they said we could, you know, they'll make an exemption for us, and we, we can give you an opinion in June or something like that, I'd be a lot more comfortable. It's just too short of a timeframe. Again, just venting, but...
Vent away. Mr. Storrs?
The way I look at this is, okay, DESI came out with a new regulation. They realize now, because of the, the concerns that have been raised, that... They realize now, because of the concerns that have been raised, that they worded things poorly, and they gave us a way to work around that. We don't, you know, nobody feels it's the ideal way to work around it, but still a way that we can work around it for this year. And hopefully, they would actually realize that they need to change the regulation and fix the wording and what have you. And again, I, this is just ten students, and like my, you know, Mr. Tyler just said, we should be looking at what's in the best interest of the students. And the fact that they're, if they attend Tri County from the go, they're going to be able to experience an exploratory, the vocation they wish to pursue, I think that's very important. We don't have that ability to give it to them. We don't offer those programs. You know, and I do understand the point made by Mr. Quinn that, you know, our exploratory is, is, you know, it's, you know, certified, but DESI's the one that has actually come out and said, "We can," I guess you could say, "disregard that regulation by using this other one." They're effectively giving us permission to do this.
Mr. Quinn?
Yeah, I've read the, I think we've all read the email at this point, and I think what was clear, at least in my reading, was that it was purely discretionary on our part, that we could do it if that's what we felt was the best possible option, given all the potential outcomes. And I think that's kind of important to stress is that it's not obligatory, it's discretionary. And I think that, in my view, that should only be used if it's going to prevent those kids from going to Tri County. If that's going to be the block, then that's, that's what we need to use to get them there. But if we can figure out a compromise that would enable them to both get the exploratory through the services that we provide, because ideally, what I think my vision is that we'd have a CTE program that would be, provide for all the needs that the students have in Attleboro. And I think long-term, that's, that's our goal. That's why we have an exploratory right now that's approved by the state. So I think it's just important to stress that seventy-six is, in fact, discretionary, not mandatory, not necessarily even advised, and in my view, should only be used if they're going to pull that opportunity off the table completely for the students because that's unacceptable.
And it's discretionary to Tri County, too. I mean, it's not, we can't unilaterally utilize it. You know, Tri County also technically has the option of electing school choice, in which case, you know, then it's, it's-
Wish they would.
Yeah. Make it easier.
Five grand.
I think, you know, we've discussed all the issues, we've discussed them before. I think at this point, you know, the administration should continue to proceed with discussions on the mid-year option. I'll continue my efforts to communicate with the School Committee of Tri County. Mr. Sheen, if you could make that request for me as well, and we'll, you know, continue to work on it. We're not in a position, we're either, either one, even if there was a consensus to, you know, to elect that one tonight, because we don't know enough to know if it would proceed. But, you know, we'll proceed on both. I think, you know, it's just as important that, you know, the community, you know, knows the reservations on both sides and where we stand, Mr. Quinn.
One thing I would like is if you could get an answer on that May first deadline for us by tomorrow, because I'd want to know if we have to schedule a meeting to act, because if it is a drop-dead May first date, which I don't think it is, but God forbid it is, we'd need to be able to act on that, and especially if, you know, what we believe's going on in good faith is not necessarily going on in good faith.
I will get that answer, and I will share that with Chairman with this as soon as I get it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney, again.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Fattato, if you want to join us? Do you have a budget request to present to us, I believe?
We do, Mr. Chairman. We would request the committee to vote to approve a level service budget as identified in the public hearing in the amount of seventy-three million, five hundred thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-nine cents to be forwarded to the mayor.
Do we have a motion to move? Discussion? Mr. Storrs?
I think it's important to just put out again, as we talked about, level service budget is everything we've been doing this year.
Yes, sir.
None of the other things that we have been talking about, some of the additional things that we believe we need-
Yes, sir.
-is the exact things that we are currently doing. Fair statement. Thank you.
Mrs. Scales?
I'm just disappointed that we're voting on a budget that doesn't truly reflect our needs. In December, we spoke about our priorities being staffing and technology, and this budget doesn't cover any of that. Am I, I guess I'm irresponsible maybe in asking to approve a higher number, but I mean, I think that's what we were elected to do. But I guess I'm just being unrealistic, and I guess that's obvious, but just disappointed in not being able to vote on a higher number.
Just to clarify, Mrs. Scales' comments, on December seventh, the last school committee endorsed a preliminary budget proposal in the amount of seventy-six million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars, an amount that was, we believed a restrained proposal that just focused on two issues, staffing and technology. And, you know, as I've said in my meetings with the, with the schools, you know, when we look at our proposed budget, and we've had the slides up several times, we have what we received this year, what we're expecting to receive from the city, level services, and on the fourth is that December seventh budget, which is what our needs are, which is what some of our needs are, and it's not something we've really, really even been able to discuss as a, as a committee due to the fiscal realities we find ourselves in. That being said, hopefully, you know, the fact that we're not advocate, not requesting that and requesting a more restrained number, which I believe is the lowest amount we can responsibly request, it'll show some restraint on our, on our side and hopefully some goodwill. Mr. Tyler?
Yeah, I'm answering Mr. Fattato. Mark, they're saying that the low increase in Chapter Seventy is because of the formula that the governor used, a new formula to determine the low income. Is that correct?
No. Our Chapter Seventy position is based on the fact that we're a minimally funded school in the state funding formula, so the demographics for Attleboro did not, did not alter the funding. We did lose thirty-five students in our foundational enrollment at a tune of about eleven thousand dollars per student. So we lost, you know, nearly a half million dollars just in enrollment issues. But our, the calculation for foundation budget changed in terms of the poverty measure, and Attleboro was not harmed by that change. So we would have ended up somewhere in this neighborhood one way or the other.
Mr. Geddes?
When you say somewhere in this neighborhood, within probably what?
Hundred thousand. One way or the other way, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Geddes?
And another question, if by some miracle, any additional funds were to come from the state, does that, I had someone say to me last week that they were under the impression that the state increasing their contribution would require the city to also increase their minimum budget. Is that the case? Or their minimum contribution?
Yeah, it depends on what's motivating the change. If, if, for instance, some of the commission's recommendations for how to calculate things like spending on insurance and spending on low income and the things that we've talked about, special education, if those calculations, the foundational formula calculations were to change, that would be a net benefit to the schools. If the foundation budget calculations don't change, the increase in Chapter Seventy funds, I believe, is just a net out for the, for the municipal obligation, but I'd have to, I'd have to look into that.
Mr. Tyler?
Go ahead.
No, please.
I was, I was just going to make a final comment, that this, Ms. Scales mentioned being irresponsible and asking for more money. I just hope that we're not irresponsible in getting too little money. And I know I've said a number of times, I don't think anyone here wants fewer police officers, or fewer firefighters, or anyone on the city side to lose jobs. We're not trying to, we're not trying to close libraries or anything like that. We're just trying to provide proper education for our students as much as possible. And as I was, as I was doing some research on some other districts and what measures they have taken to increase their funds, I found one superintendent that was quoted during a Proposition Two and a Half discussion as saying, "The need is intense because of a pent-up," what was the word, "pent-up demand." It was, you know, it was a district that, this may sound familiar, staffing issues, considerable cuts, lack of capital improvement projects being addressed over the course of years and years and years. And I, so I worry that if, if we don't look at the, the budget savings, if we don't look at cuts in other areas, then, then we as a district may get to a point where, where we have to really start looking at Two and a Half, and it's not something that I have heard a lot of support for and people that I have talked to about it, but we need to, we need some creativity in terms of funding pretty badly.
No, I don't disagree. I mean, it has a, you know, feels sometimes like screaming into the wind and deja vu all over again, as Mr. Vero liked to say. But, I mean, we have this discussion the last couple of years anyway, and, you know, it's a discussion on, you know, well, should we request level services or what we really need? And, you know, you know, I'd like to think that soon we'll be at a point where, you know, level services is the worst-case scenario, not something that we have to fight tooth and nail for, but unfortunately, that's not where we are right now.
Mr. Tyler?
Thank you, Mr. Guedes. Yeah, Mark, the, the House budget come out a little higher than the governor's, was thirty-six, thirty-nine million? Something like that?
Overall, I think the impact in Attleboro would have been about a hundred and seventy.
So that means we get a hundred and seventy thousand dollars more than what we originally thought. We get the whole hundred and seventy thousand?
In state aid.
What's that?
In, in Chapter Seventy, state aid. That's-
But the schools get the hundred and seventy thousand dollars of the additional funds?
I'm, I'm not sure of that, no. Again, I don't think the net school spending, the foundation budget changes unless they're changing the calculation. If they change the calculation of the foundation budget, our funding will increase. If the foundation budget is calculated the same way, but Chapter Seventy funds are increased, that just results in a net reduction in municipal aid.
And we still won't know until the House and the Senate get together and come up with their finalized budget.
And identify where the funds are coming from, yeah.
I think my point is, even if we get additional fees, we all know that we, as a school district, don't get all of that money. A lot of times, there's city bills that have to be paid out of that amount of money. So, you know, when we talk about, a lot of people have said to me, geez, they lost thirty-something million dollars, but when you spread it out over two hundred and eighty-eight school districts in Massachusetts, it doesn't come up to be a lot of money.
No. Yeah, the hundred and seventy thousand dollars in the context of a four million dollar deficit isn't, it's helpful, you know, five cents is helpful, but it's not going to regress the problem.
I can just hear Chairman Murphy, and I'm not saying, I could just hear it over and over my head, and I kept saying, "We can't have this budget crisis year after year after year." It's just, and then it'd still be expected to rise as a school system.
Right.
It's, it's incomprehensible, but thank you.
Mr. Quinn?
I think you bring up a really good point, Mr. Tyler, about, you know, not being at the fiscal cliff year after year and hanging on, and now we've released one finger and two, you know, and then we're just in a state of freefall. I share Mrs. Scales' concern about the needs-based budget. I feel like it's like watching a helium balloon go off, and it, those, those needs are getting further and further away rather than closer and closer. What I'm also wrestling with, too, is that, you know, a ten percent increase to get those positions is really, I don't know where that money would come from. I think that, based on what I've seen from the net school spending data and what districts are, are providing above that, you have at the bottom of the page the three-point-eight million dollar gap. That's about what most cities and towns are providing for their schools to close that gap. As Mr. Withers had said, you know, this is basically a bare bones budget of the minimum of what we need. And I remember in CCOM, once you start cutting position, it almost becomes impossible to get them back. And, you know, we're trying very hard to move forward. The strategic plan calls for big changes. A lot of them are going to require community participation versus more money, but these steps that you had put well before any of the new committee was elected, this is something that they talked about, you know, last year. And because of the budget crisis that we're in, we haven't even been able to talk about what our needs are. We've been so busy trying to figure out how we're going to get to the next fiscal year that I become concerned that we don't talk about needs anymore, and we, we, the gap just becomes so large that it becomes overwhelming. And as we vote this budget, I think it's important to continue to, you know, once we pass whatever budget in July, we need to start talking about those needs again and continue on until December. And hopefully that the municipal government can find a long-term solution to help us figure out how we're going to get out of this and how we're going to start moving forward. And I look forward to collaborating with them to do that.
Mr. Storrs?
Yeah, I think it's very important, you know, three million, almost nine hundred thousand dollar deficit is effectively what we expect if we approve this budget, which is a level, you know, level service, same exact thing we're doing this year. The type of things that we will need to do to close that if, if things don't change are beyond drastic. Major things that, that the students and the parents and the citizens of this city are going to feel, and I think it's very important. I know we'll be talking about this a lot more in the coming weeks, but I think people need to realize the kind of things that we're going to be talking about, you know, are going to be a lot of, a lot of, you know, kind of things that we don't want to say, you know, things that are going to affect people's, you know, the higher costs for things like sports, transportation, and that's just the start of this, so.
I think the committee, you know, was very insightful, you know, last year in December, November, when we were starting the process and made the point that we're no longer, you know, trimming at the margins and kind of finessing the numbers. We're in a position where we are going to fundamentally alter the school district. And in the context of addressing needs, you know, a level service budget is hostile to the concept of needs. What we're going to end up doing, you know, does tip us to a point where we may not recover, you know, in the, in the context of addressing needs. It's very, very difficult to manage what we're about to do.
Yeah, you know, I share the committee's, Mrs. Scales' concerns with only a level service budget. You know, I think the only thing that, you know, gives me any solace in a level service budget is that, you know, we don't, we don't have our heads in the sand. We know the likelihood that we, our level service budget is met or even close to met is unlikely. But what it does is it attempts to avoid the catastrophic cuts that Mr. Storrs was mentioning that are likely to come if it's not met. And, you know, that's, you know, what we can hope to do right now. You know, in preparing for tonight's meeting, I, you know, I was feeling like we had just gone over this last year, and, you know, reading the comments, and I think, you know, what Chairman Murphy had said, according to the paper, saying, "This is, you know, a budget request that you kind of, you hold your nose when you make it." And that's, it's the same certainly holds true even, even more so this year. So I'll, I'll steal from him in saying that's, you know, that's how I feel and go in with the level service budget instead of our needs, but I do think it's the prudent move in our current fiscal situation. Is there any other discussion or questions? We'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Storrs?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Withers, yes. Mrs. Scales?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Geddes?
Yes.
Mrs. Sawyer?
Yes.
Thank you all, and thank you, Mr. Fattato. Don't go anywhere yet, though.
Yes, sir.
You're still up. Wi-Fi update. May first is, is coming. I know we have a little bit of business to take care of, but we'll do in a minute, but can you give us an update as to where we stand as far as getting ready to roll out?
Sure. We, we spoke with the vendor who manages our E-Rate filings. We have a small error to fix, and that'll be finished tomorrow. We spoke to the company that installed the system at Willa, and we'll be doing the other projects that are on, you know, they're on state contract. We're working off of that, and they're poised and ready to go starting next week. We're going to start at Hill Robinson, Hyman Fine, and also fold Quello in there. We don't anticipate there to be any delays or any issues with finishing, as we have advised the committee all along.
You're always full of good news, Mr. Fratato.
We try.
All right. The one item of business we do, do have with regard to the Wi-Fi and, and being able to roll it out is that in a December fifteenth correspondence to former Treasurer Sandback last year, former Chairman Murphy referred to Thatcher Elementary School mistakenly as Studley Elementary School. And so we need to move to amend the letter to properly reference Thatcher Elementary School instead of Studley Elementary School in bullet number five. So, I have that motion, please.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
General comment. We have our minutes that we reapproved that stated correctly, and we have video of our meeting where we stated correctly. And I don't see what, those should supersede any letter that went before them. So I'm just a little irked by the whole thing, but that's all.
Mr. Quinn?
And just to clarify, Mr. Fratato, this does not prevent any of the other wiring to start next week? That we're, we're good to go, starting next week with the installation?
Yes.
Excellent. Let's get this finalized.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, and we look forward to reports on the progress going forward. Next, we have subcommittee reports, infrastructure and facilities. Mr. Tyler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did have a meeting on April thirteenth at Willet Elementary School. I'd like to thank my fellow committee members for electing me chairperson again, for the honor. First thing that we did, we did a tour of the school with Jason Parento leading the tour, Mark Fratato and Patty with us. The first item we reviewed is the boiler issues at Willet. And I think it's pretty fair to say that these boilers are well past their time. They have served their need very well, but our maintenance team is basically putting metal band-aids in the interior of the boilers to keep these things running. So it is on the capital improvement list, I believe, for this year as an urgent thing. This is just one of those things where these boilers are so old, a new one will be so much more cost-effective in energy, they almost pay for themselves. And not to mention keeping the classrooms at a, a temperature that is right there for, for teaching classrooms. Again, these are just antique, huge, old boilers that are basically rotten from the inside out. So we're hoping to get that capital improvement by the city and start investing some type of new boilers. A couple of the schools we have brand-new boilers in, so I guess Mark is going, and Jason is going to be looking at what type of boiler would best fit over at Willet. Because Willet is a very strange school. When it was being built, there was some financial problems. So there were some things that were taken out of the building. Number one, the air conditioning. Number two is they put these big, beautiful windows in the building, but they're so big that you can't open them. So now you don't have air conditioning, and there was no way to open the windows. So what the maintenance staff has done over the course of the last three or four years is taken some of the bottom sashes out, downsized them to smaller windows that can be lifted up. They placed fans strategically throughout the rooms, and they're doing what they can, but it's just one of those things where it was really not, not much foresight used in that building over there. And besides that, it's a beautiful building, but I can just imagine how hot or cold it could have been there before they made these modifications to it. The next issue was the Wi-Fi that Mark just talked about, and I think Willet being our first school that had it, the Wi-Fi was a resounding success, even more successful than what they thought. And that really, that never happened to something of that scope, so we can only hope that all of our other schools, when they've done, achieved that same success. And we want to thank Jonathan Plov for, for basically being the point man on that. Very good job. The last thing we did is we had a discussion, and this is very preliminary, and it's something that will have to go through the policy subcommittee, and it's about the policy use of the athletic field concession stand. As we all know, the concession stand was done through grants, volunteer work, but there is going to be bills in the future. There already has been bills about weatherproofing it for the winter. There's electrical bills, there's, there's other bills that keep it going. So we have to come up with some type of rental agreement like we have with all of our facilities and buildings, on how much we should be charging for using it, who should be in charge, it's just a lot of things. We're trying to get the ball rolling about that, but it is an avenue. We can't say that we, you know, something was built, now here it is, and we don't have to worry about it. No, there's got to be some type of sliding scale we can use to make sure that we're covering the expenses of keeping the building open and closed during the winter, and insurance and such and such. So, again, that's, there'll be more talks about it, and most of them will be done in the policy subcommittee where it belongs. And last, we're going to be, our next meeting, we're going to be visiting Studley Elementary School, because that's what we try to do with the infrastructure, we try to get to every school, so everybody on the subcommittee can know exactly what the little things and outs of each building are, the good, the bad, the ugly. And Studley was the one that I believe that just had the most updated boiler system put in it a couple of years ago. And I think, Mark, can you just talk about that for a second? It's a totally different type of system that even our own maintenance team had their doubts when it was being put in, because if you start looking at these boilers that are half the size of this room, and then all of a sudden they see something that's the size of a, a traditional water heater in a house, you kind of have your doubts about whether or not it's going to work. So, Mark, have you just touched on that briefly about what type of system that is?
Sure. You know, the technology today, the high-efficiency boilers, they're very, very low maintenance. They don't need management. The older boilers needed a lot of management, and, and as the committee saw, is at a point of getting substantial maintenance. So when we went to install that at Studley, the, our, our crew had some concerns about, you know, our realist, or am I going to have to sit here and babysit this thing and fine-tune it because it's so sensitive? We put in a lock of our high-efficiency boiler, backed it up with a very low-technology boiler because it's never used, only in case of emergency. So we kept the cost down significantly, and the system's worked beautifully. There's been no issue with the, with the system in, in the five years it's been in place. So we would be looking to take that same approach to the other buildings as well.
Thank you, Mike. Rap.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler. Can you give us a rough estimate on the energy savings per year with the new boilers in Studley over the last five years?
Yeah, you, you go from an efficiency in, you know, optimally in the low eighties, probably at Willet in the, in the kind of mid-seventies, to something in the mid to upper nineties, you know, ninety-five, ninety-six percent. So you, you see returns, savings in, in consumption of fuel for, for heating season of about twenty, twenty-five percent, which, you know, at a building like Willet would probably be about ten thousand dollars a year for a, for a boiler that's going to cost about forty-five.
So just as we're talking about smart decisions and good investments in our schools-
Right.
-that, that money could absolutely go to some staff.
I, I think, you know, as we've gone around, and I, and I appreciate Mr. Tyler taking us on the tours of the different schools, and you see some of the equipment that needs to be replaced, the equipment's going to fail.
Yep.
And I, and I, I get concerned about some of the thinking sometimes that, you know, we're going to get another year out of this, we're going to get, you know, sooner or later, that philosophy's going to end. And instead of being proactive and fixing a bunch of these in a, you know, a larger competitive bid, keep having this nightmare that we're going to fix them all one at a time on weekends as they fail, and jeopardize the ability to have school because there's no heat. And I, I don't know what the answer is. I wish there was a better answer, but-
Yeah, I think-
-I, I think we just need to be ready for that reality.
Yeah. You know, the municipal council, or the, the subcommittee responsible for talking about capital projects, they have, you know, on numerous occasions talked about trying to plan and go forward and, and, you know, look to the future and kind of accommodate budgetarily those needs going forward. But I think you're right, I think we're at a point, certainly within the school district, where the deferred maintenance has gotten to so large that it's, again, like our budget is, getting to the point of being unmanageable without a, a substantial, substantial effort to address the problems. It's not, again, it's not something that can be marginally addressed, you know, they're going to fundamentally fail, and you can't whole school without heat, you can't whole school without air conditioning, you can't whole school without, you know, windows and et cetera. And, and we were approaching that.
Well, I guess my thought is, it's money that we're going to spend.
Yes. Yep.
I just want to point out too that on May seventh, Mr. Conti from the Capital Improvement Subcommittee of the City Council is having his Capital Improvements Tour of the Schools. He already did the high school. He's going to be leaving Hill Roberts at nine o'clock, I think moving to Studley, Brennan, Thatcher? Oh, Willet?
Ah, Studley, Brennan, Willet.
Yep. So if he's, to any school committee members who wants to join him, and they'll be looking at all the urgent capital improvement needs.
Ms. Johnson?
So as a freshman member of the school committee, I've seen some of the schools, but not all of them. It was really great to have the subcommittee meeting at the school. The tour was great. It was great to, to see the innovative ways that the staff is using to cool the building overnight, opening the second and third floor windows to let the ventilation. And, you know, while I appreciate that, that their innovativeness, it shouldn't, we shouldn't be wrestling with this. Touring and, and seeing the, the boilers, they, to say that they are critical, I think is, is an understatement. They're past critical. And to echo what some of my other committee members have said, when they go, it's going to be catastrophic, and how are we going to, to manage that crisis? And to be, I think, as proactive as possible is going to be, you know, beyond beneficial. It's just my, my comment there.
True. And that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler. Next, we have open forum. This is a time when members of the public may address the school committee. Open forum is not a time for committee members to engage in dialogue with members of the public. Guidelines for open forum are available to you. Please know that we are interested in what you have to say, but we cannot respond without background information on your issue. Please come forward and state your name and address. Is there anyone who would like to address the committee at open forum?
And I was going to say something. Eric Kaplan, twenty-six, twenty-seven. I know you've also received a lot of the emails from me in the past. We've had a lot of conversations on this topic of the CTE. I just wanted to bring up a few things that concern me at this point. We're a week away from a deadline to make a decision. I guess my question is, is that, is this committee prepared to call an emergency meeting if necessary, if something can't be worked out with Tri-County within the next week? You do have the option under seventy-six, twelve, and I kind of equate that to what the city council's looking to do right now with appropriations of budgets. I don't see that as any different, to be quite honest. That it's just another tool in your toolkit under seventy-six, twelve. It allows you the opportunity to leverage that to do the right thing for the children. I don't see that as any different than what the city council's looking to do to have the ability to appropriate funds to the school, to the school systems. So, you know, in my opinion, you know, you have the ability right now, today, to do, to make a decision for these ten children. I, you know, we had a conversation, a good conversation with Mike and Steve about a week and a half ago, and I think we all agreed that we would work together to work with Desi to make some modifications to the, the current requirements, but at least for these ten children, you know, you can make a decision, you could have made a decision today, to be quite honest, and not kept these children in limbo for the last, for another week, two weeks. I can tell you, Tri-County's school committee is very open to an agreement. To be quite honest, I'm friends with the, the chairman of the, of the school committee over there, and I have a text message from him if you want to see him, okay? That ultimately, they are absolutely in favor, and Steve, you can reach out to him personally. I was able to connect with them very easily, and they are absolutely open to an agreement. They have their school committee meeting on Wednesday. I hope it's, now, it's time is of the essence here. If you're truly going to reach out to them, then I would hope that that's done in an expedited, not a manner. I will say I've felt uncomfortable at times in terms of the manner and, and urgency that has been, that has occurred with some of the flow of information. As much work as Mr. Sheen's done, I think I've probably done probably three times as much work, to be quite honest. And the conversations I had with Desi, conversations I had with Jeff Wilson, Deb Comfort, conversations I've had with the school committee over Tri-County, conversations I've had with this school committee, you know, I don't know if I should have had to work this hard to get the information I got. And there's still hesitation, and that concerns me. Again, I, I don't look at this as any different than what the city council's looking to do with a state law that's out there, right? To allow to appropriate funds to the school, to the school systems, right? Yes, ultimately, that's up to Mayor Dumas, and he has a veto right. Great thing here is, there is no veto right, except for this group right here. So, you know, it's interesting, obviously, I've kept up on the flow of information. I know, Steve, you said you would approve that if you were a city councilor. You know, so, you know, in terms of the flow of information, I've got a eighteen-page document with information, information. And I'm quite concerned, to be quite honest, in terms of how much information this school committee really knows. There's obviously a lack of understanding for the, the actual, how the CTE program works here, and how CTE program works over at Tri-County. And, you know, you know, I really would like to work with this group to, to make changes at Desi, but we've got a week. And, you know, we've been dealing with this for seven weeks, eight weeks. We've got children that are, my daughter's on the verge of a nervous breakdown. The children, again, when you talk about what occurred in this, and, you know, where the, the blame lies, I'm not sure. But to have this come out in the newspaper without any notification to these parents and to myself, prior to that school committee on March eleventh, I think it, there's obviously were conversations between Mr. Sheen and Mr. Withers before that school committee meeting. And I think that we were, we should have at least received a letter of notification, a phone call, that this was going to be a topic of discussion. We didn't get any of that. Came out in the newspaper, and, you know, I'll, I'll be honest, it came out the day of my father's funeral. The day of my father's funeral, it was on the phone, Mr. Sheen and Mr. Dockery, because of that news. And, you know, you know, I, I don't know how much information everybody knows, to be quite honest. I know I have a lot of information. And as I've said, you know, I've had conversations with Tri-County, the school committee there. And if we're truly concerned that the three options are there, and the one that nobody wants to do is allow, is basically have the children come for the full year, great. Have them come for ninety days, knowing that they're going to transfer, I don't see that as a great solution for these children. Knowing that you have a tool in your toolkit under seventy-six, twelve, that would allow you to make that decision now, and then let us go fight Desi and make a, make some changes in, in the language. That's all I'm asking. Give us some time, give some relief for these children who have been overly stressed, have no clue where they're going next year, and stop dragging our feet. It's one week away. You have that ability, the school committee has that ability. That was provided by Desi, that you have that ability. We can all talk about, you know, what Desi did here and, and how we all think about it, but again, you have that ability. It's clear and right. So, and now you can't answer me. I wish we could, but I really hope you're going to reach out to, you know, to the school committee, and Steve Trask. You can call him directly. No need to go through the legal team. They're waiting for your phone call. And, you know, I, I honestly was hoping I'd leave today and go home and tell my daughter, "This is all him here." But now, obviously, you know, there's some other decisions we have to make as parents in terms of what we, we need to do. I'm actually very disappointed, to be quite honest. You know, I've got four children, or I had four children in this school system, got two more after Samantha goes into high school, and I've lost some confidence, to be quite honest. I, I haven't heard from some folks here, I've heard from others, you know. Mike, I heard from him directly. Me and Jim have talked a few times, I've, you know, heard other folks' concerns, and, you know, it, it's very disappointing that, you know, we couldn't actually bring a motion to make a recommendation to, to move forward with Chapter Seventy-Six, Section Twelve, today. You know, like I said, we've got one week here, and, you know, I agree with you in terms of the, the current language, let's go make a change, but let's not sacrifice these- Let's go make a change, but let's not sacrifice these children for it. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the open forum?
My name's Robert Schwab from 20 Hope Avenue. Now, my son, Colin, is hot set on auto body. Attleboro does not, has not offered that program in any way, form, shape. His hero is counting cars. He has seen every single episode. He cannot wait to go do this for his life. You know, it's pretty easy to understand a kid who says, hey, I want to do this at, at eight years old, nine years old, and all of a sudden now at fourteen, he's getting told that he can't go into a program that says it's there. Alls he got to do is sign the dotted line, get him over there. He doesn't want to do the exploratory. He didn't, you know, I know it's part of the whole curriculum. I understand that. My wife understands that, but he doesn't care about that. He wants to get into this program and get a, get on his career. And sit here hiding behind laws, regulations, whatever it is, shame on all of us. Sign the dotted line. I know how hard Barry's working. You know, he has full, I, here's my full backing. I will go, we will go to the state and fight this all the way. All you had to do is tonight and say, hey, let's let those ten kids go. We'll all get together, as we had a meeting last week, week and a half ago, said we were willing to work with you. I don't want to fight you and the state. Now you're leaving no choice, none whatsoever, because May 1st comes, those slots get filled, he gets bumped out of a program that his heart was designed on. Yes, they may say, oh, we're going to haul them. He's not putting in writing that it's guaranteed that they're going to haul them. I, I, I just cannot believe elected officials can't make a decision. Unbelievable. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the open forum?
Hi, Bill.
Okay.
I'm Karen Capralla, 20 Casey Way, and I'm here, and I want to represent the kids with special education that have different dreams that you don't offer here in Attleboro. And I have the same thing, I have a child at home that really wants to go to Tri County, and he's, tonight said, well, where am I going? To high school. And I couldn't answer him, because I was going out the door to this committee meeting, and I was hoping that when I got here, I could go home with an answer to him. So it's very sad to see the way this all turned out tonight.
Yes.
I'm Brian Yakslosky, 4 Milk Street. I just want to say that I'm a graduate of Tri County. My daughter has been through the program. She's been along the road since she got into middle school. Her brother's in the program. Her cousins have been through the programs. Her aunts, uncles have been through the program. As a person who's been through the programs, there's no comparison of starting from scratch from day one, then shipping them ninety days halfway through the year. You need to start from day one, not only for the shops and the credibility, but also for the mental thing of dealing with friendships and everything there, because now you're going into a whole different thing. Kids from different towns, different areas, they all need to start from day one, they all start on a different page. You send them halfway through the year, groups of friends are already thing, some kids don't adjust well. My daughter does just, adjust well, but then there's other kids that don't. I know I wasn't. I started, I shipped two schools in, within a week, because I moved up to Walpole, and then I went to high school for a week. I knew it wasn't for me. I was able to go to Tri County. These kids know what they want, and they're just looking for a chance, and you guys are the ones that can give it to them. Thank you.
Anybody else?
David Arby, 36, Rose. I just want to echo all the sentiments of all these people who said. I have a daughter that's going to go to Tri County, and I think, you know, I appreciate the fact that you guys have tried to think of ways to do it, but if you've got a way that you could do it now, I think that's the best thing to do. I think we all remember when we first went to high school, when we came out of, you know, you had three or four different schools going into one school. Socially, it was extremely difficult, and to have that happen twice to one child in a three-month period is, it's torture. So I'd like to, you know, if there's something you guys can do, and if there's something we can do, we're all willing to do it. I agree with what you said, you know, right now you're talking about ten kids. It's a small group. Do what you need to do to get these ten kids in, and then work with the state to going forward, because next year you might have a problem with twenty kids, or you might have a problem with thirty kids. Let's do it now. Make the exception now when you've only got a small group of kids, and then use the next year to, to come up with a different way, change the wording. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any penalty for allowing them to go with the state?
I can't, I can't get, we can't engage in back and forth.
I don't want to play you in on everything. I've got all the things.
Anyone else? Okay, that'll close open forum. We have no other business tonight. Any other motion to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.